All right, well, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. My name is Elizabeth Larson and I'm editor and publisher of Lake County News and we are hosting tonight a debate, or actually more, yeah, it is a debate, I guess, between Victoria Brandon and Jim Comstock, who are running for District One Supervisor. And we'd like to thank the Lake County Chamber of Commerce in Calpine for being our co-sponsors. Calpine is always wonderful in giving us this great space, so thank you to them. Also want to thank Velocity Video and Mackenzie Payne for doing our videography again for this event. Over the next hour, we're going to be hearing from these two very qualified candidates for District One Supervisor. We want to hear them talk about the issues that are important to them and to you. We've received a number of questions from the community and thank you to those of you who sent in questions. We're going to start, let me just quickly run down the format. We're going to start with one-minute opening statements. We've done coin tosses to determine the order. We will then go into the questions, which will be rotated back and forth. Each person will have two minutes to answer the question and the first person who answers in the rotation will get a rebuttal. Toward the end of the questions, we're going to throw a little bit of excitement into it and allow the candidates to finish by asking each other some questions. And then we will finish with a two-minute closing statement to let them wrap up the evening. So, let's get started. Again, the coin toss determined that Jim would give the first opening statement. So, Jim, one minute.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. Four years ago, when I ran for this office, I came to you with 18 years of experience on the school board of getting things done. During that time, worked closely with our community, with the staff to get things done, I made commitments that if elected to this position, I would get things done for the county, I would get Lake County, South Lake County represented in Lakeport, and I would get projects done, I would get goods and services brought here from Lakeport that were not being done. I've been able to do that. Many of the projects that I wanted to do have come to fruition. I made a promise that the library would be built during my first term. It's being built as we speak. Along with that, we are getting a senior center with it and the park in front of it. I was able to make that come to pass. Working very closely with the community and with Caltrans, was able to correct the problems on Highway 29 and get it repaved. And one of the most important things, we'll talk about later.
Thanks, Jim. Victoria.
It does.
I'm Victoria Brandon, running for county supervisor. Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you, Lake County News, for holding this event. Thank you to the chamber also. People have been asking me why I'm doing this, why I'm running for office. The answer is that I think Lake County is the greatest place in California. I think we've got tremendous assets here, not only wonderful people, not only this drop-dead gorgeousness, not only these small towns with their special character, but putting all that together, we have a tremendous future. But we're also facing big challenges economically and socially, and we need a creative approach to meet them. And I have not been happy with a lot of decisions that have been made by the Board of Supervisors, decisions which threw holes in the general plan, decisions which disregarded the advice of the Planning Commission and state law, getting the county sued, the way that the whole medical marijuana issue was handled, I think was really poor. I think the lack of leadership in trying to keep Anderson Marsh open. Talk about more later.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to get into the questions now and Victoria will answer the first question. (inaudible) rebuttal, so it's two minutes, two minutes and one minute. So, the first question, which I think was touched upon in the openings. Measure D is an initiative on the June 5 ballot that would govern the cultivation of medical marijuana. Both of you have stated that you are opposed to that measure in one form or another. Please detail your stand on how medical marijuana dispensaries and cultivation should be handled in Lake County. Also, point out how your stand differs, if any, from your opponent. Victoria, two minutes.
All right. I think the way that this should have been handled right from the beginning was to get everybody involved, all sides, in the same room at the same time, around the table, to have an honest discussion about what worked. I think if we had done that, we would not have all the dispensaries closed, we would not have the limbo about cultivation which exists right now, we would not have measured D. Measure D would never have been brought up. I think it's essential that it be defeated, but I think it's also essential that we have fair regulations on the cultivation of medical marijuana. It's also essential that patients have the right to access safely and legally and conveniently their medicine. One difference between my stand and the position that the board took on the dispensaries is that I thought all along that it was really improper to ask, you're not supposed to call them businesses, but they function as businesses, to ask these services that were in existence, not causing any problems, all over the county, to ask them when they were to close. I think there should have been a provision to allow existing operations to continue to stay in business, so to speak. And also, it seems to me that they should not have been restricted to, in effect, industrial areas, that this is a service provided to patients, which in most areas of the county was not causing anybody any problems, and it belongs in business districts. On cultivation, I think that's a much more difficult question because there are serious conflicts going on, as we speak, all over the county with unregulated marijuana growths. This needs good, solid regulations that take everybody's needs into account. I think there's a chance of driving that now that the board has appointed a balanced committee. But before that, with the people who were involved in putting it together, there was really no hope that this would happen. That's basically it.
Thank you. Jim, two minutes.
The dispensary issue came to pass because they were cropping up everywhere and they're not allowed. There was no zoning for the dispensaries, and so approximately three years ago, a moratorium was placed on them, that none of the existing ones would be closed, but no new ones could open. And ordinance was drafted that had tremendous public input. We had more vetting of that with public meetings than probably anything that has been before the Board of Supervisors, certainly in my tenure. And the result of that, we had an ordinance that said that they could not be in the downtown areas. I did not believe that they should be in the commercial areas, and I do not support keeping the existing ones open. Some were causing some serious problems. Some were way too close to schools, and so they had to close and apply to reopen. Well, some folks didn't like that process and they got a professional petition gatherer to get enough signatures to overturn that. That then put it back to the moratorium, which had expired October 1 of 2011, which made all of them illegal, and code enforcement had to do what they had to do. And so, we're now drafting a new cultivation ordinance, since something's very similar happened with that. Let me tell you a little bit about cultivation. I've met very recently, as of today, with the DEA and our Sheriff's Department, folks that are working very closely with this. They are doing an outstanding effort of trying to curb this rampant growth that is outside of all of our communities. There are people with guns and violence that are causing hazard to our citizens and degradation to our environment. The DEA is committed to controlling this. I am totally supportive of them. We have a major, major problem here and law enforcement is really stepping up to take care of this. I applaud what they're doing. I want medical marijuana patients to have safe access.
Thank you. Victoria, one minute rebuttal.
One minute. I disagree on so many different points, it's going to be hard to get it in on a minute. The county had three years to come up with a dispensary ordinance. They didn't approach it correctly because they didn't have all sides at the table. And so, they wound up with something that a lot of the dispensary owners, who were going to be forced to close, relocated in places that were not suitable, felt it was so impossible, they went to the ballot initiative route, and that threw it all out. That, I think, was really bad management. On the grow ordinances, we had a similar sort of process. I also disagree that effective measures are being taken. Code enforcement is not enforcing violations of existing codes that are all over the place. I've got a place like, one of these grows near me, I've complained four times for illegal grading, for illegal camping. It's right above a creek. They've got no sanitation on this site all summer long, even while they're living there, and nothing has happened.
Thank you. Second question, Jim will answer this first. Last fall, the Board of Supervisors voted to allow the owner of Rattlesnake Island to move forward grading and building a home and caretaker's cabin without completing a environmental impact report, which the Lake County Planning Commission had voted to have completed. Do you think the board made the correct decision? Why or why not? And do you think that decision was precedent-setting for the county?
The Rattlesnake Island issue comes down to an issue of private property. Rattlesnake Island is owned, it's private property, it's owned by an individual. He has the rights to his property, and he was attempting to exercise those rights. There were a lot of meetings concerning this. The gentleman that owned it agreed to have, he had an archaeological study done, things, there were no significant artifacts found, so because it was not found, some people said, "Well, we need another study. We need an environmental impact report done." An environmental impact report is wonderful, but it can be certainly an obstructionist tool to keep things from happening. The gentleman that owned the property agreed to have onsite tribal members on any excavation, anything that was being done. He had agreed to that from the very beginning. His mitigation measures were sufficient, they were going to be very, very, some caissons put down to put the building on, flying in the building materials. It was going to be very, not much disruption at all. And the bottom line is, he owns the property. I understand that the tribal folks do not like that, they don't want something to happen out there. What happened 150 years ago, we can't correct here and turn that property back over to him. He owns it and he has the right to develop it according to the rules and regulations. He has followed those. The Planning Commission voted that way because they said, "No matter what, this is where it's going to end up." Well, we, the Board of Supervisors, voted to be able to allow him to proceed. And he has been proceeding. There are ongoing protests. It comes down to private property rights. A person owns a property, they have rights to do certain things to it, and special interest groups cannot and should not be able to stop some from exercising their own private property rights.
Thank you. Victoria, two minutes.
Okay, we've got another point of major disagreement here. I believe in private property rights too. I'm a private property owner, but private property does not trump state law. And that was what was going on here. State law is very clear on requirements for an environmental impact report, as was recognized by the Planning Commission when they unanimously voted to require it, as had been recognized by the Planning Commission when they unanimously voted to require it three or four years previously, that when there is doubt about whether something is going to be causing an environmental impact that is not going to be mitigatable, then it is necessary to do the environmental impact report. In this case, this was going to be very focused. It was just going to focus on the archaeology, which is the important issue out there. There were also issues about biology, there were issues about aesthetics, but the Planning Commission, I think quite rightly, even though I argued otherwise at the time, said, "These are not significant." Significant is being a really important word in state law regarding this. So, three registered professional archaeologists submitted letters saying that the nature of the archaeological study which had been conducted was inadequate, that this was not a sufficient basis of knowledge to go ahead and do this project, that it had to be done in a more rigorous way. And that is the evidence that influenced the Planning Commission to vote unanimously to require that environmental impact report. And I strongly support their position. I think they were absolutely right. And this is part of a pattern also, which is really distressing, that there's now a suit against the county. I have nothing to do with it myself, but I know it's there, a suit against the county on this issue. That this regarding state law leads to lawsuits and costs us money. And that seems to me what's going on in this case.
Thank you. Jim, one minute rebuttal.
Yes, there is a lawsuit. There have been multiple lawsuits with various projects and things in the county. And to be quite frank, my opponent has been very actively involved in several of those lawsuits. I don't believe that we should have lawsuits. I believe that we should be able to work things out without the threat of lawsuits and then extorting money from communities or property owners. The decision that was made by the Board of Supervisors is approved by law. The state law has not come in and said, "You must do an environmental impact report." That has not happened. It was an interpretation of an opinion that it is required by law, and our planning department has stated that the gentleman is able to proceed with it in accordance with state law.
Thank you. Question number three, Victoria will go first. What is your single most important achievement in the past three and a half years? Two minutes.
Okay, well, I can think of a number of things, but most of the things that I've been involved with are the sorts of things that a lot of people work together to do. And like, for example, the great new development here in Middletown with the senior and center and library, people build on other people's work. So, I'm going to talk about something I'm really proud of, because in the first place, it was just me, and in the second place, everybody came out winners in this one. A couple of years ago, there was a proposal to put a cell tower in downtown Lakeport immediately across the streets and the side of the courthouse, and they were going to disguise this thing as an 85-foot green plastic pine tree, right in downtown Lakeport. Well, it's a requirement, again, state law, that when a cell tower installation is proposed, that it's necessary to investigate rather formally and present the evidence, colocation. Is there some other place where there's a tower you could put your equipment on? And there happens to be such equipment on top of the courthouse. It brings in revenue to the county. So, I got in touch with the then head of Public Services, Kim Clymeyer, and I said, "Did they ask you? Is there any problem why they can't put that cell tower on top of the courthouse?" And he said, "Nobody talked to me, and I'm the one they shouldn't talk to, and we would love to investigate this." So, he sent me an email, said, "You may quote me." So, I went to the Lakeport City Council meeting and brought up these little facts and said, "They haven't investigated this alternative." I quoted Kim. And the upshot of it was that the city council turned down this application. We do not have an 85-foot plastic pine tree. The cell tower is on top of the courthouse where it is bringing in $2,500 a month revenue to the county.
Thank you. Jim, two minutes.
My single most best accomplishment that I have made in the last three and a half years has been to bring a voice to District One in South Lake County, to Lakeport, and to get things done here. I am a person to get things done. The library project had been languishing for years. Funds were set aside for it, nothing was happening. I said I would make it happen. It has happened, it's being built as we speak. And there was a need for a senior center. We combined the need for the senior center with the library to put them in one building so that we can have goods and services, we can have a community building here which meets the needs of the seniors, all of whom want to use the library, and in combination with that, purchase the property for the park that's being built in front of that. South Lake County, Middletown, as you come in, is going to have a tremendous presence to people coming into our county. Along with that, the needs to speak up for the people when we have problems with the roads. Highway 29, Caltrans had made a major mistake there. Working very closely with MAP and with Caltrans, was able to help make this happen, to get that road repaved. That is a tremendous accomplishment for us here in South Lake County. That's who I work for, the citizens of Lake County specifically, South Lake County. That has been a tremendous accomplishment. Also, according with that, the stop signs at the corner of Hartman Road and Highway 29, many, many accidents happened, and I took petitions from people here in Middletown and Hidden Valley, 500-plus to Caltrans. We got the stop signs put in there. No one is going to be killed there. There are going to probably be some fender benders. No one is going to be killed. My accomplishments are getting things done for South Lake County, and I'm proud to say that we have made major accomplishments here, getting things done for safety and for aesthetics and for business promotion here in South Lake County.
Thank you. Victoria, additional minute of rebuttal.
Okay, just a little bit of a comment that I thought it was only supposed to be one achievement, but also, as I said in my introduction, that these are, as most things are that we accomplish, this is a question of a lot of people working together and building on each other's labors. I'd like to spend the rest of my minute rebutting something before about being actively involved in lawsuits. I've been involved in exactly one lawsuit against the county. The function of lawsuits in this case is that there is no administrative review of the decisions of the Board of Supervisors, and when they do not follow state law, the only way for, the only redress possible is to go to litigation. It's really unfortunate that that is true, but that is the way the system is. That's the only thing that can happen, and that's what's happened in a number of cases, including Rattlesnake Island.
Thank you. Question number four, and this will start with Jim. County government is where many people have direct interaction with their governing officials. They're probably more likely at that level than, say, state or federal. What is your vision for how a local government official can best serve their community? Two minutes.
A local government official can best serve their community by being in the community. You need to interact with the citizens of your community and hold meetings with them. My opponent has said that she would hold regular town hall meetings in the communities. I've been doing that. I report to MAP four times a year, reported to Hidden Valley at least once every year, Low Lake Community Action Committee group, excuse me, meeting with them, listening to their needs. You only can serve the community by being in it, getting the pulse of the citizens, taking their needs, in this case, to Lakeport, and making their needs become actions and have things happen here in your community. I have done that, I committed to do that, I have been doing that, and I will continue to do that, to be a representative for you, the people of South Lake County. That's, a government official is only doing his job when he is listening to the citizens and his constituents and meeting their needs, and that's what I do. I get things done.
Thank you. Victoria, two minutes.
Okay, I think one thing which is really, really important, it's an essential role of local government officials, especially in this kind of small community, is to be open to all segments of the community. That local government and local society doesn't work when it's just one small segment of people who are making the decisions and have the ear of the people in charge. It's got to be inclusive, or it's not going to be functional. And that is one aspect. Another aspect that I think is absolutely essential for local government is to provide the leadership that is needed to move forward. That we have got a lot of tremendous people in this community who've got wonderful visions for the future, who are willing to devote hours and hours of their time and labor. For example, we did a cleanup in the city of Clearlake last Saturday. There were dozens and dozens of people turning out to pick up trash in the streets and try to improve their community, but somebody has to step forward and provide the leadership for doing that. And I think that is the most, single most important function of a local government official, is to be that leader, to identify the needs by talking to the people, by gathering that information, and then to put it together so that we're in a good position to move forward. And also, in that same regard, to have relationships with our state legislators, with our other representatives, with state employees from state staff, for example, like the Department of Fish and Game and the California Department of Food and Agriculture, because they're also people we have to relate to. It's to provide that nexus, provide that leadership.
Thank you. Jim, one minute rebuttal.
As a local leader, as I had said, the most important thing that you can do is be in your community, get their wants and needs. I listen to everyone. I take phone calls, emails, from everyone, from every side of issues, and I always return their calls and their emails and listen to their concerns. I've been open to everyone. I give out my personal phone number, my cellphone number. People call me all of the time. I was dealing with a wonderful lady in the Lower Lake area with child support issues. Was dealing with a gentleman today. There's a right of way through his property, he's wanting to find his liability concerning that. I answer the needs of the citizens, listen to them, go find the answers. Some of them, you're not going to know the answers right off, but you go get the answers, bring them back, because the most important asset that we have are you, the people, and as a community leader, a local government leader, I represent you to get things done for you, to help your personal benefit and the benefit of the community as a whole and the growth of our community. As I can say, I'm very proud of our community center that is being built. That's an example of representing the community and getting things done.
Thank you. Question number five, we'll start with Victoria. If you were elected, or re-elected, to represent District One on the Board of Supervisors, over the next four years, what kinds of businesses would you attempt to draw to this district in order to create jobs and create economic strength? Two minutes.
Okay, I think it's really important that we build our economy in ways which will be sustainable in the long run and that build on the assets we've got right now. This place has got tremendous assets. It is not only beautiful, it's not only got all this wildlife habitat, it's not only got these small towns, it's got fantastic people, and a lot of them have got tremendous visions for the future. Yesterday, I was at the dinner meeting for the Clearlake Chamber of Commerce and hearing about all sorts of wonderful ideas people have. For example, there's a group forming called Thrive Lake County, which is aiming to build, bring local businesses together to support each other and to provide some of the investment that is needed for local entrepreneurs to move forward. There is, has been estimated more than $7 billion in liquid assets owned in Lake County which is deposited outside Lake County. Just a small portion of that brought back to the county, invested in the local businesses would make a tremendous difference around here. I think we should build on our equestrian heritage. Sonoma County, the horse business there is worth millions and millions and millions of dollars, and it is a fantastic asset for the whole community, and we can build on that here. This is particularly in the South County, particularly in Middletown, but this is one of our really strong traditions, and there are opportunities to do this and for other, for people who are involved in these activities who really want to come here because they can get beautiful land, they can get substantial parts of it, they can still afford it, and they have access to so much nature for their own private activities and for businesses.
Thank you. Jim, two minutes.
Business in Lake County has always been very difficult. We have, it's known as leakage. The dollars out of our county, we don't have leakage, we have a hemorrhage. Our goods and services are performed for us by Santa Rosa. The largest community in South Lake County is Hidden Valley Lake. They have park codes on their cars. You go to every parking lot in Santa Rosa, you will find Hidden Valley Lake cars in every one of them, every day. Those people, there are 6,000 people living in that thriving community. They want to work, live, and recreate here. No community is successful till multi-generations of families can live and work in the same community. We are not there. I am for promoting more goods and services here, more retail businesses, that the tax dollars that are leaking out of here are preventing us from picking ourselves up. We cannot protect the environment that we know and love here so much, that we're here because of it. We cannot protect that in poverty. Santa Rosa's thriving on our tax dollars. We need to keep them here. We need to promote small manufacturing and businesses. I totally support the Crazy Creek Project. I worked on the area plan for six years, trying to help goods and services and businesses be grown here. This is an example of one that is going to be coming forward. I am totally supportive of that. The things that they will bring are exactly what we need. The agriculture industry is growing and doing well. We need to continue to support that. The equestrian is wonderful. My dad raised and trained quarter horses for years. I know it intimately. It is a very, very, very tough business. It takes an enormous amount of capital to do it. We have a thriving horse community here. It is kids in our 4H and the FFA and the high school rodeo, and right here, the Jim Cannons. It is a wonderful asset that we are already using very, very, very well, but we need people to be able to... But we need people to be able to work here, get up in the morning and go to work here.
Thank you. Victoria, one minute.
I certainly agree we could do with better retail in Lake County. And as we grow and prosper, we're going to get it because we're going to be able to afford more things. It would be real nice to have a shoe store, for example. But that's not the path to economic growth. It's not the path to prosperity. It's not the path to a great future. The path to a great future is to build on what we've got. And the two separate, two things which interconnect to do that, there are to diversify our appeal for visitors, aside from just three months in the summer, just on the lake, to bring all the other great attractions that we have here, along the model, for example, that has been done out in Harbin. To do that, and also to diversify agriculture so that we can keep more of our agricultural products, add value to them right here at home, and sell them also locally. And I would imagine in the future, if with proper government, that maybe medical marijuana could be one of those agricultural assets too, instead of being a largely nuisance.
Thank you. Question, we'll start with Jim, and this question builds on answers that you just incidentally gave. So we'll go ahead and devote a little bit more time to this talk about economics and the types of businesses that should be here, in your opinion. So, question six, and we'll start with Jim. When it comes to building the economy of District One in Lake County, there are various proposals that have been offered. Both of you have already touched on some of them. One is to build big box stores and retail outlets so people can shop here rather than Santa Rosa. Another is to secure high-speed internet, devise new ways to support and attract small businesses, develop agriculture and tourism, and redevelop and beautify local communities. Please discuss the relative merits of these two proposals. We'll start with Jim, two minutes.
First off, big box stores are not going to come to the unincorporated part of the county. There is a policy in the general plan that says there will be no big box stores in the unincorporated part of the county. Big box stores can only be built within the city limits of Lakeport and Clear Lake. There's a proposed regional shopping center to bring some big business to the city of Clear Lake. I totally supported that. My opponent did not. There were, actually, one of the lawsuits that you was involved in was not with the county. It was with the city of Clear Lake that caused some stumbling blocks for that. Redevelopment funds that were going to be used there are now lost because the state took back redevelopment. That's a real challenge. I still am a major proponent of that. I want us to have goods and services here, and if you develop the, an anchor tenant, all of the satellite tenants will end up having success. It's a proven strategy. Works very, very, very well. I am a proponent of business, local business. Small businesses thrive when there are anchor tenants. They keep everyone here.
Thank you. Victoria, two minutes.
I very much disagree. First place, the limit in the general plan is 40,000 square feet retail, which is maybe not a big, big box, but also would allow a very substantially large business. The crucial distinction is, is it a local business or is it a chain corporate business coming from outside? And the statistics on that nationwide are that out of every local business, 45 cents that's spent there comes right back to the community and stays here. For chain formula, retail-type businesses, it's only 15 cents. So all you get in the local community, aside from the sales tax revenue, which has to be shared, is that 15 cents in pretty low-paying jobs, many of which don't even pay decent benefits. Local business, do you know that small, local businesses employ half the employed people in the country? This is the engine of growth, and this is the engine that we can get rolling right here by using effective means to bring people together, to provide enough clout to be able to prosper. For example, one of the things that has been mentioned, was mentioned again last night at the Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce Dinner, was to have a consortium of local businesses that would be able to go into the medical insurance business to be able to provide decent health insurance for small, local businesses, which is one of the disadvantages that those businesses have in the competitive environment. That can be done. The capital can be provided locally, and then that stays here. It doesn't go off to corporate headquarters elsewhere.
Thank you. Jim, one minute of rebuttal.
The mention of only 15% of large businesses, funds today here is very wonderful. But 15% of something is better than 100% of nothing, which we're getting right now. Those big stores that are interested in coming in are coming in for, interested in coming in for one reason. Because yours and my Visa card is being used in Santa Rosa, and they purchase that information. And by purchasing that information, the market survey says those businesses would be successful here. By their success, we have the sales tax revenue, the jobs provided to provide the goods and services. We cannot provide jobs for businesses that cannot attract customers because they're already gone. We need to keep them here first and have the development of our retail industry and our small businesses here. And that comes from starting with anchor tenants, and the outgrowth takes care of itself. And you end up having a thriving, wonderful economy with sales tax dollars and jobs to be successful.
Thank you. Question number seven. We'll begin with Victoria. What are the most pressing issues for District One, in your opinion? And what skills would you use to address them? Two minutes.
Okay, well, I think the most pressing issues for District One are similar to those for the rest of Lake County. The fundamental problem is that we've got a stagnant economy. And we've got to use the assets we've got to build an economy which actually works for us. And this is something which has got to be based on what we have, what our assets are, what our needs are, and what our people want. That is, I think, the central issue for our community right now. And another really important thing is to provide, enrich the environment for our young people. As I think we all know, the current educational setup, the resources of the schools have to go so much towards teaching to the test and are so limited that they don't have the, what they need to provide the enrichment that really turns kids on. And there is, for example, what we call a nature deficit disorder among young kids. There is a real hunger for art and music that can be provided in this community. And that is one of the things that I'm finding so encouraging about what's going on these days. There was a, there's a new cooperative art gallery in Clear Lake that had an opening a couple of weeks ago. There were more than 200 people there. There was all sorts of great work there. These are people who had been in the habit of selling their art, a lot of it really, really good, out of county, and were persuaded to, okay, come together. Let's get this, let's get this facility. Let's build something together. And they are really going gangbusters at it. We're also getting more live music. And all of this comes together to grow our attraction for visitors, which will be one of the real fundamentals for a prosperous future.
Thank you. Jim, two minutes.
The number one challenge in our area is, when we graduate our kids from high school, we give them two things. We give them a diploma and we give them a bus ticket because we do not have jobs and opportunities for them here. One thing that I am directly involved in right now is with Lower Lake High School, there's a group of folks trying to put together a vocational ag program, which is an FFA program through Lower Lake High School. These are very, very challenging budgetary times. And we now have a proposal that is going forward. There is going to be an ag teacher hired for Lower Lake High School. The vocational ag program will be started. This, a survey was put out. There are about 64% of the students in Lower Lake High School are interested in participating. 700 and some odd students there, 500 and some odd responded. 66 and 2/3% of them responded. They are interested in this. I'm very involved in it, very supportive of that. We'll continue to work very closely with that community. In our area, the number one issue is that we do not have jobs and business opportunities here. And I have expressed my concerns about that at great length. The next number one issue is the proliferation of the illegal marijuana growers all around our area. A gentleman was coming down the road just two weeks ago and had a flat tire. Stopped to fix his tire, and five gentlemen dressed in camouflage with weapons came out and were watching him until he finished. That is unacceptable. That is a huge issue with us. The DEA is totally committed to helping us take care of that problem, and I am totally supportive of them and our local drug enforcement guys from the county. That's our number one issue, and we have to take it by the horns. And keep it out of our schools, keep it out of our communities, and allow us to go in our own forests and beautiful lands that we have that we're being excluded from, from these drug growers who are trying to take over our land.
Thank you. Victoria, one minute.
Well, I certainly agree that drug cartels on our public lands are a serious issue, but I think that is something that we can be dealt with, and it's not number one. Number one is working on the future of this community. And I think another way that we can, absolutely, we have it in our power to do this, is to harness the power of the internet. One of the things about Lake County is that we are surrounded by mountains. We've got transportation difficulties. This has always been one of the characteristics of Lake County that makes things more difficult. Well, thanks to the information superhighway, that's not a problem. We've got two fiber optic cables crossing the county. There are efforts underway to link our whole community into those so that people who want to start internet-based businesses actually have the tools to do it. And this is something that we can be competitive, not only all over California, not all over the United States, over the entire world. We will not be at any kind of disadvantage once that has happened. There's tremendous opportunity for growth here in a really sustainable way that's going to be for the benefit of everybody.
Thank you. Question number eight. Again, this is something you just touched on. Lake County has many natural resources. How important do you believe it is to protect those resources? And which resources, if any, do you believe are in particular danger? And Jim, we start with you.
Lake County has fabulous natural resources. Just under half of the property in Lake County is publicly owned already. That is a wonderful asset for us. We need to preserve that. And I will elaborate some more. We need to preserve that by keeping the drug cartels out of it, which keeps us out of our public lands. These folks are not only coming on public lands, they're coming on private lands and causing serious, serious challenges. Our number one asset that is in peril is our lake. The lake is our jewel, and our jewel is somewhat challenged. We have been working very, very diligently on the algae problem. Have we found a solution for that yet? No. We're going to continue to aggressively approach and find solutions to mitigating the algae problem and the prevention of the quagga mussel coming in here. We are working very actively to come up with a program that works. There have been so many ideas put out there, and we have not come up with a good one yet that's going to work successfully to prevent people from coming in and infecting our lake. We've been lucky so far. The inspections at the choke points, I believe that is probably the best way to go. And I, we had asked the state of California to declare an emergency concerning this, state of emergency. State of California has not recognized that. The Department of Fish and Game has not been near as active in this as they should have been. We have raised their antenna. We have made it known to them. Lake County is being a leader in trying to prevent the quagga mussel from coming in and infecting us. It needs to be a statewide program, not just the county. We have spoken out in a leadership role to make this happen.
Thank you. Victoria, two minutes.
The, yeah, the quagga mussel is certainly a serious threat. I've been on the Invasive Species Council here in Lake County, helping to devise effective regulations. We all know that they're not as effective as they should be, but they're getting improved all the time. This is what you'd call an iterative process. It goes, you try something and you see it isn't quite as good as it should be, and you improve it, and you go on from there. And I think that's the process that's in. The state of California considered declaring an emergency about this when these mussels were first found in Lake Mead back in 2007, and got the legal opinion that it did not meet the legal justification for a state of emergency, which was an immediate threat to human, to human health or the environment. And health and safety, basically, was what that was about. But they were able to take emergency measures anyway, so they got there by the back door. Another thing which is certainly very dear to my heart, that is not spoken of as much as the lake, is the wonderful natural areas that we have on the eastern part of Lake County. Actually, they, this region runs from Lake Barriessa north through the Blue Ridge and through the Cache Creek Wilderness, clear up to Snow Mountain. This is about 100 miles north to south. It is about evenly, the federal lands up there, about a half million acres, about evenly divided between the Menace International Forest and your land management. This is a proposal I've been working on for the past four years to have this declared a national conservation area, which I'm delighted to say the Board of Supervisors unanimously agreed to support this proposal just a few weeks ago. I think that'll provide really great tools for keeping that area from becoming degraded in the future. It's a land management tool that we really need, and I hope it's going to go forward very soon.
Thank you. Jim, one minute.
As I had stated earlier, our number one issue here is protecting our lake. To protect the lake for recreation and for agriculture. Yolo County takes, they own the first seven feet of the lake. They take the water out of that directly. Yolo County has not stepped up and taken their part in this. They say they're very interested and very involved, and the minute you ask them to put some money in, of course, their eyes glaze over. 100 years ago, this year, they applied for the rights on Clear Lake, and Lake County didn't. So they own it. That's not going to change. And when we try to work with them, we find that they're pretty resistant. They will give you a lot of lip service, but if actually stepping forward and doing something, they won't do it. So we need to take the leadership. We are taking the leadership to do that. We've attempted to work with the state. The state has not stepped up. We will continue to do our efforts to protect the lake. The tourism at the lake directs all of us here because the people come through Middletown to get to the lake. And we want them to continue to come, stop in Middletown, buy a little gas, buy a little food, and go to our new park, but they can't do that. I'm sorry.
Okay, question number nine.
Oh.
You can state it because you're going to go first.
Oh, okay.
That was the rebuttal. Question number nine. During the campaign, each of you have had a chance to state publicly your viewpoints and priorities and have, and hear those of your opponent. With what viewpoint or idea of your opponents do you most markedly disagree? Two minutes.
I'm going to have to make a sort of a list. I markedly disagree with the idea that corporate retail outlets are going to be an engine for economic growth. I think maybe some of them will be desirable to provide shopping opportunities that we would, could use here if it's handled right, but it's not going to be the engine driving our economy. I markedly disagree with the claim that the process for devising medical marijuana regulations was open and inclusive. I think it was extremely narrow. The fact that there was a series of public meetings and people with differing points of view were able to get up there and talk is not real inclusiveness. Inclusiveness is having them part of a stakeholder group which is devising the answers to the problems. And we have seen the negative results for not doing that. I markedly disagree with the, as I mentioned, with the idea that the decision to not require an environmental impact on Rattlesnake Island was acceptable. I also markedly disagree, this has not come up this evening, but it has in previous debates, the idea that letting the Crystal Lago project go forward north of Lakeport was acceptable. I think this was gross attack on our general plan that we created here by the community, tremendous input from the community, $3.5 million, five years of effort, and that decision... effort and that decision just drove a truck through it. And that, that was an extremely reasonable, reasonable, since been corrected. I guess that's getting on the microphone.
Do you need a break until it?
I'm going to run out of AC, you took AC compressor, right?
It'll go on for how long?
I'm going to run out of tape anyway, so maybe we should take a break for a minute.
Okay, you want to take a break? Let's just take a quick break and we'll let this out. So we just had to take a brief break for some technical issues and then we just, Victoria just was finishing her answer. Again, this is about the change, do you want me to repeat the questions?
Sure.
Why don't you repeat it? During the campaign, each of you had a chance to, to state publicly your viewpoints and priorities and have heard those of your opponent. With what viewpoint or idea of your opponents do you most markedly disagree? Two minutes.
Well, I most markedly disagree with my opponent concerning the economic growth and viability of our county. As I have said, we have, we're all leaving for goods and services that if they were performed here within the communities that we have, we could bring ourselves up by the bootstraps. As I said, no community can be successful until multi-generations of families can live, work and recreate in the same community. And we don't have that now. We give our, our kids a diploma and a bus ticket because there are no jobs here. We need to generate the jobs. We have a tremendous asset in geothermal industry and energy right here. I'm a major proponent of the geothermal industry. It brings in millions and millions of dollars of tax revenue and jobs. Calpine, the corporation that owns this building, employs over 300 people in this area. Very good, very high-paying industrial jobs. I know many of those people and they say, I live in this beautiful area, I have an industrial job with an industrial pay that goes along with that. They can purchase vehicles, their food, their homes. Unfortunately, about the only thing that they can purchase here out of that is their home. They have to leave for those other goods and services. I want to promote the industry, the retail industry that provides the goods and services for those people who are already working here and leaving with their dollars. The other area that I most markedly disagree with my opponent in is that, the lawsuits. My opponent has been very actively involved in, in multiple lawsuits. The one directly with the city of Clear Lake, put that regional shopping center on the back burner, the redevelopment dollars were gone. How many millions of tax dollars and jobs were lost because of that not being able to come to fruition? We cannot measure that. As I was talking to the folks in Clear Lake in the harbor in the village to a person. Is that me?
Victoria, one minute, rebuttal.
Okay. Again, multiple lawsuits isn't true. Two lawsuits, one county, one city. I'm proud of the role I played in both of them. The project, there's no telling what that project would have turned up, turned into. The reason for the lawsuit against it was because it had not been appropriately evaluated. The projects of that sort require detailed economic evaluation. They do have spreadsheets, they have bar graphs, they have circle graphs, they have numbers, they have the facts that the decision-makers need to make the decision. None of that was done. The decision would have been made just out of a kind of a fluff analysis. It did not have what the citizens of Clear Lake deserved to make the right kind of decision. I can see a retail project going ahead on that, that site. I can imagine it being beneficial, but the decision-makers need the right kind of evidence to decide whether it is or not and whether it's cannibal retail or new retail.
Thank you. Okay, we're at question number 10. And Jim will answer the question first, but this time this is the wrinkle. Victoria will be asking the question. So Victoria gets to ask the question. Jim, you get up to four minutes to answer. We're going to give you a little bit more time to answer questions of each other. Once you're done with your four minutes, Victoria will have a minute to follow up, maybe push him on a few things. You will get another minute to answer and then we'll do it vice versa. So then you will get to ask. So Victoria, you get to ask first.
Okay. I'm going to stand up where I can see you when I ask the question. This is a much more specific kind of question, something I've been curious about for, I guess it was a little over a year now. Lake County Community Action was a, providing very important services to some of the most vulnerable members of our community, some of the most, the neediest members of our community. It folded. Other agencies had to take over the, the roles of providing all those services on extremely short notice. You were on the board of Lake County Community Action for many months leading up to this, this, this fiscal catastrophe where they, among other things, they owed $100,000 in back payroll taxes that they didn't have the money to pay for. I'm wondering why this collapse was not addressed earlier while it was time, there was still time to save the agency, so it did not have to close.
Jim, four minutes.
Yes, thank you. Lake County Community Action Agency did perform some wonderful services for our county. I was asked by Supervisor Jeff Smith to sit on Lake County Community Action Board. And I sat on that board for quite a few months and as I went to the meetings, we were not getting specific financial information. We were not, the meetings were not scheduled and held on a regular basis and the accountant's report quite often would not be there. I asked question after question after question, why are we not getting accurate financial information and why are we not having the accountant report to us? And why are the, the questions of the ambiguity of services being continued when grants were no longer there? The people running it had the absolute best intentions of running that. Unfortunately, their fiscal ability was not there and the accountant actually did some things that caused a major, major, major issue. I had questioned that repeatedly and in my questioning of that, I never was able to get good answers to that. And when it finally came out that this was in a collapsing nature way before I ever was on that board. They performed tremendous services. Unfortunately, as the fiscal climate changed, they had not changed and downsided, downsized. They were attempting to do that, continue all of the services because they wanted them to be provided. And I totally agree and support with that, but you cannot provide services that you cannot pay for. And that's what ultimately caused the collapse of the Lake County Community Action Agency. I talked to some of the people that were renting property to them, they weren't being, hadn't been paid for, months and months and months and months. This was an impending storm that exploded. Jeff Smith was very concerned. I was very concerned and we were not getting accurate answers when we were asking those in the board meetings. And then the board meetings were not, they were scheduled at random times, which conflicted with other schedules and I was unable to attend a lot of those. I have a very tight schedule. When, when a meeting is changed, it's very, very difficult to get there and I expressed that on many, many instances. It's very unfortunate. The Lake County Community Action failed. The people that have picked it up, I commend them and I thank them. The lady who was the director of Lake County Community Action Agency, is a wonderful lady, performed tremendous services. Unfortunately, the fiscal oversight was not there and caused the problem that we're still living with today.
One minute of follow-up question.
Okay, just a follow-up question on that because I'm still rather bewildered on this. This is not the only organization which has supervisors on the board. It's very common for supervisors to be appointed to help supervise various organizations and committees and groups that do so much to run things in our community. Okay, that's what the, they see in advance this fiscal failure when, when Supervisor Rushing went in there on a moment's notice, attended one meeting and said, this, there is no financial background to this organization. We can't continue to subsidize it from the county. If it was so apparent, why wasn't it recognized earlier?
One minute to respond, Jim.
I briefed Supervisor Rushing on this situation prior to her accepting that position on it. I had said I can no longer sit on this board because of the inaction and the inability for it to function. And she accepted that and I briefed her of that and she went to one meeting and said she wasn't going to go to any more of them. The, the situation, the supervisors do not come in and supervise. Supervisors are members of a board. The board consists of many, many, many people. A member of the board of supervisors has no more authority than anyone else on that board. It's a collective group.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, Victoria will, will answer, but you get to ask it. And you'll get four minutes to respond and then you'll get one minute of follow-up and one minute of final response. So Jim, go ahead.
My opponent has stated that you will be an independent voice for South Lake County and, and I want total clarification of what that independent voice will be when it is noted on the Lake County Live website that her, that you are a community activist and that you're very involved in the Occupy movement. And if, if you're directly involved in Occupy movement, how can you be an independent voice? And also the, you're endorsed by the Nurses Association who had chosen to strike one of our, our hospitals here. We have wonderful nurses. They're paid well. I don't believe that that strike was going to be beneficial in any way and how can you be an independent voice when you supported, supported them? Please answer that.
Okay. I'm really glad to, this is sort of a variant of a question at the last one, please. Nobody's bringing up Loveless this time. The, I have, I have no connection with the Occupy movement. I support some of their objectives to try to reduce the influence nationally and internationally of massive amounts of money, but I don't know anything more about it than I read in the paper. Oh, no, wait a minute, I do, I do, I did. I dropped in on one of the, one of the rallies last fall that was being organized by my dear old friend Shirley Howland in Clear Lake. And I stood around there for half an hour or so while some excellent people like, for example, Clovis Lewis and Carol Cole Lewis spoke about their objectives. That's my only connection with the Occupy movement. The other things I'm involved in are, I'm involved in a bunch of different organizations. The nurses, I really am tremendously honored by the nurses' endorsement. And I was tremendously honored yesterday to be able to go out there to attend their rally and stand in solidarity with them. What they're being asked to do, and they, they agree, yes, they get, they get good pay, they get good benefits. They're being asked to cut them. And they're being asked to stand by while the benefits and pay of the other people who are not registered nurses, the other kinds of support staff, the nurses aides and the technicians and all of that, while they accept cuts. And they are standing up for patient care and for their, their colleagues who are not in as strong a position as they are. I think that's extremely honorable. I was also really, really impressed yesterday with the nurses when, after the, the rally and some speech making and all of that, when they were discussing what to do next today when they, to go into work and where should they gather and all of that. And their leader was suggesting, okay, we'll gather in this room in the hospital and the lobby and so forth. Saying, no, 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 wait a minute, we can't do that. By seven o'clock, there are going to be patients in there. If we stand around there, we're going to be interfering with patient care. Let's, let's do it outside. Let's do it in this anteroom. Because their commitment to caring for their patients was paramount. And that, I think, is the real reason why they're going on strike is that they are seeing this effort by a multi-billion dollar corporation whose executives get, one of them gets $4 million a year to supposedly balance their budgets on the backs of their workers and by reducing patient care. And I'm very strongly supportive of what, of what they are doing to protect, protect their colleagues, protect, protect their patients. And I'm, I'm really proud of their endorsement. This is not something which is likely to dictate anything on decisions of the Board of Supervisors since that would not really come up. I'm, as I have said, involved in a number of other local organizations. Obviously, if I'm elected to the Board of Supervisors, I will no longer be in a leadership position in any of them, which is a fair enough trade, trade-off.
Jim, one minute of follow-up question.
And then Victoria gets the answer. Victoria, it has been, and you, in your own words, that you're a community activist. Would you please describe what a community activist is and does? I have seen that that has not been particularly beneficial for things in our nation, in our state and in our communities. Please describe your position as a community activist.
One minute to respond.
My community activism has involved writing hundreds of comment letters on all sorts of things in, in Lake County. I have attended probably thousands of meetings. I don't even want to think about that. This is as, as a volunteer for what I take to be the benefit of this community, the benefit of, of all of us. Another aspect of community activism that I'm involved in at the moment is I'm a member of a state committee on invasive species, 24 stakeholders from all over California, which has allowed me to form networks in the region and throughout the state that could be beneficial to Lake County and has also broadened my perspective enormously. I'm going to be the chair of that committee next year if I'm not elected to the Board of Supervisors. If I am elected, I will have to, to cease active participation in that too. I think community, community activism is what makes our community gold. It, the, the passion of our volunteers, of the people who live here, who care about this place, that's what community activism is and I absolutely stand behind it.
Thank you. All right, well, we've completed the 10 questions. Now we're going to go into closings. You'll each have two minutes, just to wrap up. The coin toss determined that Victoria would go first in the closings and Jim would go last. While you guys are sitting there gathering your, your thoughts for the final statement, I just want to again thank everybody for coming tonight and thank Calpine, the Lake County Chamber of Commerce and Velocity Video for their help. So for the closing statements, again, two minutes. Victoria, we will begin with you.
Running for office has been one of the great privileges of my life. It has been tremendously broadening. I have met such wonderful people with such vision and such talent, right here in this community that I hadn't known before. I've learned so much from them. I also feel tremendously humbled by the people who have been working for me, the volunteers who've been going out there, walking up and down streets and putting up signs and doing everything else that makes a real grassroots campaign happen. I thank them so enormously. But this election, this is not about me. This election isn't about me. This campaign isn't about me. It's about you. It's about what kind of a future you want for our community, what kind of a future you want for your, our children and grandchildren. I think it can be wonderful. I think we've got it right in our grasp now to make something that is uniquely our own, to have a permanent kind of prosperity which is based on our real assets that we're always going to have. We can do this and I think we, we really got it in our grasp now, but only if we all pull together. I think we're, we're going to need more community active, activists and we're going to need strong leadership on the part of county government to pull it all together and make it happen. But we're just on the edge right now. There are so many people here who want to make this happen and who can. I've got a dream here for a future where what counts is what's in your head, what's in your heart, what's, what's in your spirit, where it doesn't matter what you look like or who you know. And I'm asking for your vote on June 5. Thank you.
Jim, two minutes.
When I ran for this position four years ago, I said I would get things done for South Lake County and be a voice in Lakeport and I, and I've been able to do that. As I have reiterated several times, the roads, the stop sign at Hidden Valley, also was able to get streets in Middletown paved that had not been touched in years. We did that on a shoestring budget. We did it with county workers. We had inmate labor working on it. We got things done. And this is a nonpartisan office. I work very, very closely with all people. Congressman Mike Thompson has endorsed me. He said, quote, "Jim has served District One and all Lake County residents with high distinction and deserves to be reelected." I am very proud that someone whose typical political views are going to be somewhat different than mine, he endorsed me because we work together and we get things done. I'm also endorsed by the North Coast Builders Exchange, which is made up of local contractors, builders, the plumbers, the carpenters, the roofers. Those, those people- Those people endorsed me four years ago. Their constituency is down 25% because there's been no work for them. They're endorsing me again. I make things happen. We have a major building project going right here in Middletown, put in by the Lake County Deputy Sheriff's Association Board. I'm proud to say that I am endorsed by the boots-on-the-ground law enforcement in our county. They support me and endorse me, and I support them wholeheartedly in what they do. Getting things done for you, the citizens of Lake County, has been my job, my vision. That's what I said I would do, that's what I've done, and that's what I will continue to do. And I humbly ask for your vote to be able to continue to serve you, to improve our lives, those of our children's lives, and so our grandchildren can live in this wonderful place that we know and love, which is Lake County and specifically, South Lake County. I ask for your vote on June 5 to continue the vision, to improve our lives and make it better for all of us. I get things done for you.
Well, again, thank you again to all of you who came tonight. Thank you both to Jim and Victoria. Good luck to both of you. Wish you both the very best. I know you both can't win, but...
I hope you're not wishing that it goes to him. I don't want to do that. But I'll break out, please.
It's been so delightful we could do this again in October, so... But thanks again for coming. Thank you all, and have a great one. Good night.